Two, one.
Okay, good morning, everybody, and welcome to today's Cabinet meeting. I would ask everybody to leave their microphones on mute, but turn them off and indicate you wish to speak or comment on an item. Just say your name and allow a little brief pause so that we can get you up on screen. In advance of today's meeting, all Cabinet members have received electronic copies of the agenda, and we've all read through the reports and proposed decisions, and we're familiar with the contents of those reports. Also, can we just note that there's been an opportunity for members of the public to register and ask questions. None, no one has asked to register or address us in relation to any items on today's agenda. So at this stage, I will ask the committee secretary to bring each of us Cabinet members on screen individually in turn to check we can be seen and heard, and also that we can see and hear all the other participants. Lastly, can I confirm that the chief executive and all the senior management team are also present and online for this meeting?
Thank you, Joe. Next on screen, councillor Miller. Can you just unmute your microphone and confirm you can see and hear us?
I can see and hear you, and good morning, everyone.
Thank you, and good morning to you too. Sharon, if you could just confirm you can hear us okay and see us?
Yes, absolutely fine for me. Thank you.
Excellent. Good morning. Wendy, could you do the same, please?
Yeah, I can see and hear everyone. Thank you, mate.
Barbara?
Yes, thanks, mate.
Paul?
Good morning. Yes, I can see and hear everyone.
Pam? And Ruth? Just unmute your mic?
Yes, I can see and hear everyone.
That's great. Thank you. Joe, back to you.
Are there any declarations of interest from anybody?
No.
No, we take that as a no. Just if you, if there are, just say them. If not, we'll accept that as a no. So no declarations of interest. The minutes of the last meeting, which were the 5th of June, are those minutes of the last meeting agreed, please?
Agreed.
Brilliant. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, item number three on today's agenda is mayoral reports. They're not to be considered today. So we move on to mayoral recommendations, item number four on the agenda. We've got three public recommendations today. A is the Liverpool Economic Recovery Plan. You are aware, we trailed this and publicised this last week. So apologies that it's come a little bit late to Cabinet, but that's because we needed to submit it quite early. It's an ambitious document. It's a detailed economic recovery plan that we're proud to have submitted. Tony Reeves and our officers and other people that we brought in have worked extremely hard to produce a report, working alongside our partners and the universities, the private sector partners, and many, many businesses within the city of Liverpool have supported our economic recovery plan. I think it's a real, a real opportunity for the SIF government to recognise the quality and what this recovery plan can achieve. It's a real opportunity for Liverpool to boost and grow its economy, to create jobs, 25,000 jobs, 12,000 in the construction sector alone, 5,000 apprenticeships, support education skills agenda. It's a document that ticks all the boxes from our inclusive growth, from our housing strategy, talks about retrofitting housing. It's a great document that I am delighted with, that it's been submitted. As I said, all of our policies on inclusive growth, on community wealth, on house building, on the green agenda, on improving skills and education, all of those things are in the document, and all of those things are right at the heart of the document. So as I said, it's a great offer. I don't know whether Tony wants to make a comment, the chief executive, or any of the Cabinet members. Tony, do you want to make any comments on it?
Just to say, as you just repeat, fantastic partnership effort, a lot of business engagement and other partners, universities, et cetera, working closely with us. It's been very well received locally. The point that we've made consistently is that this is Liverpool's plan. We're not asking government for permission to act. We're offering government the opportunity to invest in the accelerated delivery of the plan. The plan is based on our priorities, and it also focuses on Liverpool's economic strengths. So it is grounded in reality, but behind every element of the plan, there's a properly costed business case that sets out how we'll deliver. So we think it was the first one to land on government's desk. We are now engaging all the significant government departments in discussions and talking at permanent secretary, director general level. Some of our partners, particularly in the business world, are engaging government as well and promoting the plan, and hopefully we can, we can really move forward. Final thing I'd say, Mayor, is that we're already working on delivery, and we have a delivery group now meeting weekly, really focused on driving the plan forward. So it certainly won't be sitting on any shelves gathering dust, and we will report back regularly to Cabinet on the, on the progress that we're making.
Okay, so thank you for that, for that additional comments. Anybody, anybody from the Cabinet? I know we've had a chance to discuss this, but does anybody want to make any, any comments? Okay, no. So thank you for that. And as I said, if we can, I think, just pass on Cabinet's thanks to everybody involved, all of the staff, the chief executive, the people in regeneration, the business sector, business community, everybody involved in that. Our thanks to you. And I think it was the first that was submitted. Let's just hope that it receives the traction that it deserves in, in government. Okay, so if we accept that recommendation as set out in the report, can we just again do it in a reverse way? And if anybody doesn't accept the recommendation, please say so, otherwise we'll accept that it's agreed. So does anybody disagree? Okay, so Mike will accept that as agreed by the Cabinet then, okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
So if we move on then to B, which is the move-on arrangements for temporary accommodation. Paul, can I ask you to take us through this, please? If you don't mind, that's, make any comments. So over to you, councillor Brandt.
Thanks, Mayor. One of the very few upsides of what's happened during the pandemic is the fact that we as a nation have showed that we've been able to take on this moral scar of rough sleeping as a nation, and the individuals who were on the streets at the point of lockdown, nearly all have taken up the council's accommodation offer, that we were determined as a city to make sure that we don't just return to the pre-COVID position. And this report is part of a suite of reports that are coming forward from us to try and provide a solution to the long-term problems of rough sleeping in the city. We are working very closely with our housing charity partners and local housing associations to provide a solution so that every individual who was formerly on the streets has been given the offer of permanent accommodation, own front door accommodation. Not just that, but also a large wraparound package of social care to ensure that any mental health or other needs that the individuals might have are properly catered for, and that any tenancies are long-term and are sustainable. There are, this is an incredibly complex issue, but Mayor, you will know that Liverpool has, if you like, led the way nationally on the tackling of rough sleeping with Labray House, the only 365-day-a-year shelter which was operating in the city here. Clearly, that is not a long-term solution in a pandemic world. That form of accommodation itself is a, is a risk for the individuals. So this report is part of the jigsaw of measures that we are putting in place to try and make sure that we do not return to the moral scar of rough sleepers on the city centre streets. At the moment, we can say that there is nobody in the city centre who doesn't have an offer of accommodation or roof over their head. That's a proud boast, and what we are ensuring here is a long-term solution to tackle this particular problem. So we look forward to work, continue to working with our housing association partners and with our local charities to provide a long-term solution to this problem.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Well, I mean, I just want to add my thanks to yourself and Martin and the team that's been working hard behind the scenes to look at what we do and how we do it in relation to the uneasiness of lockdown and what we do. And of course, you're absolutely right that Labray House during pandemic, during, you know, any form of lockdown, even if it's eased, but we have social distancing in place, is going to be difficult to work and difficult to operate. So I think it's absolutely right that we, that we look at working with our partners to see what accommodation we can provide and support people to move on into, you know, accommodation, secure accommodation for themselves, to try to help themselves. And I think that it's about us trying to see if we can work with others, other agencies and our, our own staff to provide that wraparound support, to make sure that people move on and try to get, you know, an opportunity for, if they've got substance misuse or anything else, but also to try and help them get into work and to try and see if we can get them the support that they need, because often they just require, you know, in their own mind, hope. And if we can give them hope that people are there for them, I think it can help. So well done to everybody. Any of the other Cabinet members got any comments to make? If you, Martin, I know Martin wants to come in, so please do so.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that. Thanks, Mayor. I think your words are really helpful, and I appreciate the recognition. I think the service and the partners have worked extremely well together. There were a couple of things that I thought I'd just add into it, just to give the wider Cabinet an understanding around the position. I think if we'd said at the beginning of this that we would be accommodating over 300 people, but actually several months on that we could say that the level of COVID in that group is zero. We've had no COVID outbreak at all. Nobody's actually been symptomatic, and obviously we've had no direct impact of that, that that's a real testimony to the very swift action that Liverpool has taken. But I also want to pay testimony to some of our partners in terms of what they've done. We, fairly early days, had partners who came up with a significant amount of money, support offered from places like Paper Cup around just more general support. And we've come to an agreement with the registered social landlords largely about providing furnished accommodation so that we can move significant numbers. And we're not far off now getting 300 properties being identified to be offered to address this issue, which, you know, I think is phenomenal, and certainly something that Liverpool is being recognised in terms of the progress that we're making.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for that, Martin. And as I said, I think it just emphasises my point again about the, you know, the partnership approach and, you know, the Paper Cup and the Whitechapel Centre and our partners in the residential social landlords, because they've done it without them. So it's been a real team effort, and incredibly grateful to them for all their support and ongoing support. It's, you know, it's clearly going to be, you know, if you like, challenging moving forward, but I'm sure, pulling everybody together, we can, we can actually make a huge difference here. So thanks to, again, once again, thanks to everybody. Okay, so nobody's indicated then that they wish to comment. So can I ask again that the recommendation is agreed? So if nobody disagrees, has anybody disagreed with the recommendation? Nobody's indicating that they, they are against and not, not supporting the recommendation. So can we accept then that that is being agreed by Cabinet? Okay. And then, that's great. So we move on then to item C, which is the acceptance of funding from Sports England to support the Merseyside Sports Partnership. It's on pages 44 to 48 in the report, and it just seeks our approval really to accept and to act as the accountable body for Sports England, to receive a grant round about 1.8 million for the period 2020 to 22. This will be used to support Merseyside Sport Partnership in its core work on physical activity and thematic programmes, including children and young people, and a workforce programme. Of course, it also work alongside supporting others to address the negative impact of the pandemic and potential widening of inequalities in support and also in physical activity across the city and also Liverpool city region. Wendy, do you want to make any comments on this?
Yeah, this is not, not a lot, but I think it is really important for us to reflect on some of our high numbers in the pandemic. You know, we knew before this that we have some of the highest rates of heart and lung disease in the city, and also specific cancers across Liverpool and the wider city region. And I think, you know, our physical activity and sports strategy that's been ongoing for some time has been a great partnership for us all to try to come together, you know, and including the inclusive growth plan, because we can't take any of these things in isolation when we're looking at the health. And particularly for this programme, it's actually targeting some young people. So to start having physical activity as a part of your daily life, which obviously can help your health, and also the workforce as well. I think what the pandemic has shown us is that actually when people are given some time, they will then begin to engage in more physical activity. We're seeing a lot many people, a lot more people now walking, cycling, et cetera, and linked with some of our other policies, you know, that councillor Connor and others are doing in respect of, you know, our highways and making it more cycle-friendly. I think everything that we can do to increase people's health, to increase their capacity, you know, to fight disease, if they're unfortunate enough, you know, to be struck down, either with COVID-19 or anything else, really, it's really important. And, you know, a lot of work's gone in, we're meeting with Sports England next week as well, just to look at our strategy in general. And I think it's a welcome amount, but, you know, we have got a long way to go to improve our health outcomes in the city, and it's across a wide range of things, and a lot of that linked to poverty and deprivation as well.
Okay, well, thanks for those comments, Wendy. And I think it points well made about COVID and comorbidity issues and stuff, the problems of poor health. And of course, it, you know, whilst the money is welcome, we'd also welcome back some of the money that's been taken off us in relation to support and public health and our education programmes and public health that is required and needed. So, you know, they're given one hand and taken away in another, which is, but taking away a lot more than what they give us as well. So that's disappointing, but, you know, we welcome it as well. So can I, again, just say, if nobody is against the recommendations that we agree, what's being set out in the report, please? Okay, so nobody's indicating that they disagree. So if we accept the recommendations and have accepted the recommendations, Mike, so we move on then to the next item, which is partly exempt unless anybody, you know, we'll, we'll take it anyway, unless anybody wants to speak to the appendix of the, the report. It's set out on pages 49 to 91 of your agenda. It's just seeking really funds for immediate repairs and urgent requirements and repairs for the maintenance of assets at the Croxteth Hall estate. So it's pretty straightforward. Wendy, you want to make any comments on this at all?
Only to say, you know, this is part of a, you know, a wider programme of actually, you know, bringing Croxteth Hall up to, up to the standard, you know, it needs to be. It's now in with our city assets, being managed along with our other halls, you know, to have a whole hall offer. Try saying that first thing in the morning. And the, the importance of it is these first set of repairs are to ensure that, you know, there's no further deterioration. They're the urgent repairs. Obviously, we had a wider programme, and then with COVID-19 and financial difficulties, you know, these are the ones that we feel need to be brought forward immediately to prevent any further, any further deterioration. We will be working, you know, closely with the hall, friends of the hall, and other groups who use it in the future as well, you know, just looking at how we maximise, you know, this fantastic asset that we do have as a council.
Yeah, and of course, I think, I think it's worthwhile pointing out that after 50-odd years, it was this administration that refurbished the burnt-out part of Croxteth Hall and brought it back into use again. So we're determined to make sure that we sweat the asset and use the asset by the community, but also the wider city community and other people from outside. It's a great building, great asset, but also within the grounds and also around. We own lots of buildings and land that it needs to be protected and maintained. So this report sets out how we're going to do that. So again, if nobody's got any objections, anybody got any objections? Okay, no. So we'll accept the report then as it is, and the recommendations as set out within those reports, within that report, and within the details of it. Okay, so thank you for that. Item five to eight, there are no reports for agenda, items five through to eight. So just from me, it just, I think we'll have seen the announcements yesterday from central governments around the investment that they're making, which in terms of infrastructure around the country, which is hugely disappointing if that's the only amount that we get. But let's hopeful that when the Chancellor makes his announcements shortly, and the Prime Minister, that there is more intervention, more funding coming from Treasury to support economic growth in line with the plan that we've just submitted. So we keep our fingers crossed for that and hope that they see sense. Otherwise, it's going to cost a lot more money to keep people unemployed and to pay benefits, but also to lose income in terms of general tax and national insurance contributions. So it seems to me to be eminently sensible to invest and get some returns on that. We'll have also seen the announcements of £500 million on the COVID response from central governments. And I think that takes us up to just under £4 billion, when everybody, LGA, you know, all the council networks, everybody recognised that it's in excess of £10 billion required. We are working through what we will get from the £500 million that's being allocated, but it will be a drop in the ocean compared to what is needed by the city moving forward. But we'll get some more details of that over the next few days, and I'm sure Mel and Peter and the team will be number crunching and looking at what is being allocated and what that means for us, and whether there's a formula attached to it, poverty formula, which was agreed in tranche one, which was removed in tranche two, which means that, you know, if they stick to tranche two, we'll get less. But if they go with the model in tranche one, we might get a little bit more. But whatever we get, we'll be nowhere near what the spend is. Again, we have to wait and see what the details are. The devil's always in the detail in terms of, you know, the, the commitment to allow councils to borrow and use reserves and stuff, which we've got very limited reserves anyway that can be used, but to do things over a three-year period. So again, we'll have more details probably for the next Cabinet meeting where we'll give some information on that. So that's it really from me. Just to say publicly again, congratulations to Liverpool Football Club. That was a fantastic achievement in winning the league with seven games to go. Amazing feat. Obviously, it's disappointing that we're not able to allow a parade in the city as yet, but we will be working with the club and others to see what we can do. And of course, I just want to go on record as well as to thank Jürgen Klopp for his comments and his leadership off the field as well as on the field. I mean, I think he's been a tremendous inspiration, and some of his comments that he's made have been really welcome. So congratulations, I'm sure, from, from me, but from, from the whole Cabinet. Wendy, have you got your hand up there? Do you want to make comments? Or do you want to take your hand down? Wendy, you've got your hand up. Do you want to speak?
Sorry, I was going to say, just when you finished on the Liverpool specifically, I didn't know whether you had anything else to say. So it wasn't on the Liverpool item?
Right. Well, I've finished on that now. So have you got anything to?
Yeah, yeah. It was just really to express my thanks to yourself, to the team, and to councillor Shaden Connor as well, for the Without Walls, all the work that's gone into that programme. It's underway now on Bold Street. It is a scheme that, you know, will be delivered in a lot of areas across the city. There's intense amount of work gone in right across all departments, certainly highways, the culture team, et cetera, really worked hard. And I know Sharon's done a lot of work with yourself, Joe, speaking to businesses and, and other people about how it will impact on their areas as well. So I just think it shows, again, in our recovery plan, as you were saying from day one, you know, we needed to start thinking about recovery from the minute, you know, we were told we needed to go into lockdown and what that would mean for the city. And I think it's really important for people to see actions as well, you know, from, you know, from a local government sort of saying, we're going to support people for them to physically, to be able to see that, to give them that hope, and to know that, you know, they have got the backing of quite a number of partners behind them, you know, on your behalf, because you've got the courses, he's going to be meeting with, you know, the police and other partners about the reopening, obviously, of the hospitality sector across the city region, and how we respond to some of those challenges, you know, this morning. But, you know, I just think it's been a fantastic piece of work. I know Robin has done a lot of work, you know, not in singling them out. I know Auntie Bard and his team, and Ian Wiggins as well have been amazing. And there's lots of other people behind the scenes, but, and Sharon's done an immense amount of work, you know, not, you know, she's had all the cycle lane projects, and then has really got involved with this as well. So just to put on record, my thanks to everyone.
Yeah, thank you for that, Wendy. And I think that goes for every one of us on Cabinet. Shannon has played a great role in this, and Aziz Claire, and Robin at the culture team, but also Andy, Ian, the whole team. There's been a real fantastic effort. And, you know, I think it shows our commitment to support businesses, the money that we, we put in to help businesses expand. Let's just hope that people behave responsibly over the weekend. And, you know, because what we don't want is to, you know, have to change and make, you know, make significant reductions in, in what we've, what we're allowing to happen over the weekend. So let's just hope it goes well. And, you know, I think it, you're absolutely right, it's the right thing to do, because when a business goes, it's, it's people's livelihoods that goes with it. And so it's important for us to try to help them as much as we can. And I think that's what we've done. I think it's been held up as an exemplar across the whole country really. So as I said, it was, you know, it was something that I think the whole team pulled together to, to make happen. So delighted with that. So yes, thanks for that, Wendy. So I have to leave and... So yes, thanks for that, Wendy. So, um, I, uh, have to, uh, leave and join a Core Cities, uh, meeting immediately, uh, now, right after this. So can I, uh, ask, uh, cabinet members to, uh, remain on the team's meeting at the conclusion of this for a private briefing session on, uh, the, our Without Walls programme and what's happening over the weekend with licensing and stuff, whatever. Uh, I, I'm aware of it, so don't need to stay. I've got this other meeting. So can I thank you all for your attendance this morning and please enjoy the weekend? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, cabinet members. And just for benefit of the public watching the live stream, thank you for joining us at today's meeting. And just to confirm, this concludes the live stream of today's virtual cabinet meeting.